Good evening. It's seven o'clock, five o'clock on the wall back there, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order with six members present. And since it is Veterans Day today, I think we'll start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'll rise and join us.
Right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So?
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. You entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. One of you the motion and one of the second.
Yep.
I heard her first, so you get the motion, Susan gets the second.
Be fine.
Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Okay. Do we have any comments from the public this evening? I do have one. There's a really good crock pot of soup over there. If you're hungry, feel free to have some. There's also some tea over there as well. And the soup's good. Hearing no reports, we'll move on to item 5.01, an update on the Lincoln and Garfield roofing projects. Mr. Leslie.
Well, I don't have a lot of good news to report.
He's afraid of that.
Yeah, um, I guess let's start at Garfield. The structural engineer has found that there are a lot of discrepancies in, in the, uh, the construction of the building, especially the new addition and stuff, and he is unsure, well, it didn't, it doesn't meet building code currently. The structure doesn't to support the existing roof, much less a new roof. So, he's gonna, at the request of your superintendent, I think you're gonna get a request to have him look into the safety factors of what's existing, um, and whether or not it even needs to be beefed up to hold the existing roof that's on there now. What we found is, your existing roof has structural beams at four foot on center. Well, then they put the new structure on top of that to support the sloped roof at four foot, eight inches on center, and the, and the document's called out for four foot on center. So they're eight inches off, which pushes that eight inches beyond the beam below. So it's not, your next roof structure is not centered over the structural beams. And my assumption is that whoever was installing them, it's, it's a, it's a U-channel, your base support, and it was, should've been measured center to center, but once he got started, he probably measured outside edge to inside edge, which started pushing them eight inches over, because it'd be four inches off on the first one, and then four inches off on the next one. But, you've got a construction manager and a structural engineer that should be on site verifying life safety issues like that. So I think, again, you need to discuss with your attorney if there's any action and what action should be taken there, because you didn't get what you paid for, and I, uh, we've got copies of emails and documentation that said it was supposed to be four foot on center, and it's not. So at this point, roof-wise, new roof-wise, there's nothing that can be proceeded with until the substructure's taken care of. And unfortunately, the roofing contractor had already gone through quite a bit of expense to get, because he was getting ready to get started until we uncovered all this. So we're kind of in-
So what will, what will the remediation likely be, irregardless of a lawsuit? But what will the re, the physical remediation of the roof be?
That's a structural engineering question that I couldn't even begin to answer. A common sense guess would be to add additional structure over to center on top of the columns. And there may be, needed some structural supports even underneath on the inside of the existing building by adding some posts or something to the existing structure. Just from the information that I was given from Bob D. Campbell, the structural engineer, that we had paid to do that part of the study.
Common sense hasn't dictated already, so far, so.
Right.
I'm unsure that it will-
What about the safety of the occupants right now?
It's really kind of in question, and I, and I think Dr. Stroh had talked to Wayne, the structural engineer, and she may have some comments on that, uh, because Wayne, Wayne is the one that was doing the analysis and running the calculations, so.
The roof has been there since 2005. We've had a number of heavy snows, wind, and so on since then. Um, when Dr. Cross and I spoke with Wayne Davis on Friday, um, late afternoon, he didn't mention anything about having safety concerns. His big concern is to put the overlay on top of the roof, rather than, that it, it's not, it won't support the overlay. That was his, his, um, big concern. Um, it wasn't that it was unsafe at the moment. Certainly, we, we want to make sure, and, and so as an action item, after Mr. Leslie completes his report about Lincoln, we're asking that, um, that the, the board approve, um, that Wayne Davis' firm do a full safety analysis, and that analysis will let us know if it's safe, as well as what's the, what are the next steps? What, what needs to be done to ensure that that roof, um, is done the right way and, and is safe, um, in the future? Because it should be a lifetime roof.
Yeah, all that substructure that was put up there should've been something that was added to the building that would've lasted the life of the building. You know, the roof is a life cycle item for the roof itself, but the structure becomes part of the building. Uh, and the part that worries me is that he did send the district a letter, kind of not really relieving himself of any liabilities, but giving you guys the knowledge that there could be some issues on the existing structure, that, that it really needs to be taken further before anything is done. You know, he didn't do a letter like that on Lincoln, but he did on Garfield, uh, because he does have some concerns.
Right, and that's the step we want to, that's the next step we're gonna take.
Right.
Right, so.
Exactly, and I, you know, he, if he'd have, and, and, uh, Bob D. Campbell's a very good and fairly large engineering firm, and if there'd have been real safety issues, I think he'd have brought that up immediately, you know, if he, if he had thought you needed to, to unoccupy the building or anything like that, especially coming into winter like we are.
Yeah, we didn't get any red flags for that, so that's, I suppose, at least a little bit of-
But we have confirmed that, that you did not get what you paid for, and, and I did, uh, your exist, your architect you work with, they were helpful. I went by their offices and dug through boxes and found documents, and, uh, they sent me some copies of some email communications between them and the structural engineer. So we do have a few copies of some things that were, were design changes and such. But we have the one main email, and I, I sent a copy of that to Dr. Stroh that did specifically state four foot on centers for that structure, and you did not get that. And the part that makes that tough, I don't know if any of you have climbed in that attic over there, but it's jam-packed full of ductwork and mechanical units, and there's just not a lot of space in there. So, changing the structure, you know, it may sound fairly simple, but then trying to finagle it around all the stuff that's up there, I mean, it was-
Simple of all the needs, huh?
Yeah. So, not good news there. Now, Lincoln, I had to do a lot of digging there. I did find that the structural there on everything but the, the office area roof, uh, was designed to minimum standards. It does meet code, but very minimum standards, won't support another roof without taking the existing panels completely off and then putting new panels on.
Any guesses as to what this is gonna cost?
My nearest guesstimate right now would be about a hundred grand, a hundred and fifty grand.
In addition to what we've already-
Yeah.
To remove those panels.
Yeah.
Guesstimates as to what we're looking at with Garfield, knowing that you don't have enough information at this point to-
I couldn't even ballpark Garfield at this point, not, not knowing what he's gonna have to do to change this, the substructure. Because at this point, you can't even take the panels off and put on new panels, was what we take from what he had sent us on, on those emails.
Not like it's take the, the substructure out as well.
Yeah, or at least add to it.
Add supports.
But I, I really think you're also gonna have to add some more supports, even down into the classrooms on the existing structure.
The disappointing part of this is, is that there were, and, and mind you, this was 2005, so, so many people weren't, um, weren't here that are here now, but the disappointing part is that when you, um, you have a, um, project like this, you expect a number of checks and balances. And the, the disappointing part for us really is that, that those checks and balances either weren't in place or weren't, um, weren't as proficient at their work as we would expect.
But we, yeah, I mean, I think the district had them in place.
We did.
I mean, when you hire a construction manager-
Exactly.
You expect that they're gonna manage the project.
Be your advocate. That's what we hired Manning for.
So I, I think, you know, I don't know what else the district could've done. Uh, and your structural engineers should, on life safety stuff, should always come out and spot check. I've never seen a project where, where the structurals don't come out and verify, especially the life safety stuff. You know, unless that got value engineered out, and I see nothing to show that that would've happened, and I don't know any attorney that would let that happen. I mean, those are all things that absolutely should've been verified, either, I mean, you really had two pla, your construction manager and your structural, so you had two people fall down there, and I don't know where the city lies in all this, because they should send their inspector out as well.
Because the district wanted to be about the issue of educating kids, and we knew that we were pretty thin in terms of, you know, because our maintenance staff was, is, was fairly thin, so that's why we spent the extra money to hire Manning.
Yeah, and even if that, most maintenance staffs aren't, most of them can't read construction documents that are laid out by architects, much less know what they're going out to look at. I mean, they're more about stuff that pertains to maintaining the buildings, not the structural design or this construction of the actual structural components, for the most part.
So for Lincoln, we don't need an additional study. For Lincoln, what we will decide with, um, with Mr. Dale White, our new, um, Director of Facilities and Maintenance, um, and we'll work with Mr. Robinson about when to begin the project, whether we do it this winter or, or wait until summer. And I'm sure we'll want to give Mr. White some time to, to review many of the documents and so on that he has. So that's a decision that we can make, or, or we can leave to Mr. White. The decision, I think, that needs to be made this evening is to approve, um, BDC to conduct a, a full safety analysis on their Garfield roof structure at a cost of ninety-six hundred dollars.
And I so move that.
Second. A motion and second to have BDC conduct a safety analysis on the Garfield roof, structure, and the old section of the building, um, for a cost of ninety-six hundred dollars. Is there any additional discussion?
You know, do we have a mark on our door or something, you know? Like hobos used to put a mark on the door so they'd know which house to go to for the pre-cook.
Yeah.
I mean, it's on our roof.
I don't know where it is, but contractors know where it is, that they can get away with crap work in, in USD 290. I mean, the air conditioning thing over at the high school.
I know.
And we're talking about millions of dollars.
Yeah.
And it's just happened again and again.
But there's some, there's something else here, there's something else here. Uh, my son works for Black and Beach, and he did, uh, he did a lot of estimating for Black and Beach before he went out in the field and started building. And typically, this school district has said, you know, "Cut the fat, cut the fat, bare bones." You know, "We don't have that much money to spend on it." And in his opinion, I mean, not about this necessarily, but general opinion about any type of construction, is that when you start saying, "Cut the fat, we want bare bones," they cut the stuff you can't see, like what you're talking about.
I agree with that.
They cut the heating and cooling, and they're cutting things exactly what you're saying.
Heating and cooling and the building envelope, roof, walls are generally things that get cut first.
Yeah, because we can't see that.
But never the structural, none of the life safety stuff, they generally don't cut.
But it appears that that may have happened here.
But, well, it did happen with the roof, I mean, they really value engineered and cut back the roof structure and, and, uh, and walls and stuff like that, but should've never, ever happened, and, you know, Black and Beach and Burns and Mack, those kind of folks would never let anything happen with the, with the structural, the life safety stuff.
Yeah.
And the fact is, is Manning had part interest in that roofing company. We didn't know that. It's under a different name. You know, we didn't know that when we hired Manning. Then they got into-
That, and they had a drywall company install the framing system.
And they couldn't measure, evidently.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, the drywall people, I mean, they, they're not used to precise measuring as much as, you know, a structural guy knowing that there's life safety issues.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
I, I, you know, as things move forward, I'd be glad to meet with Mike Norris, our attorney and stuff, if you need a representative from the board. I'd be glad to, because we've, we've sat-
Dennis again.
I know. Well, Dennis said too, at that hours, eight hours we sat there, he said, "Oh, the owner always pays." I said, "No, we're, we're so not paying this time, because we didn't do this." We, you know, we did everything, the district did everything in good faith and good conscience for the kids.
Yeah, I believe you that the district did, and I mean, that's why those contractors carry errors and operations insurance for this sort of issue.
Dr. Cross and I spoke with, um, Mike Norris, or, or really, Dr. Cross spoke with him, and then via email, he has reviewed and continues to review the subtle agreement, and it appears at this time that the document says floors and roofs, and he believes that means that no, um, no-
Structural.
-structure of the roof can be litigated again, but he's, he's making very sure of that, so.
In other words, we're gonna get to eat the cost on this, so.
Yeah, I'd like to probably talk, be in on the conversation with him, because I think the roof and the roof structure are two separate items. Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be good.
That would be good. We have a motion on the floor to approve a safety audit of the Garfield roof structure for ninety-six hundred dollars. All those in favor signify by saying, or by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero, so we'll get that underway.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also need to address the existing POs to the contractors, probably. Have yours already talked about that?
No, because we, we haven't seen it, so we'll have to-
Okay. All right, cool, thanks.
Thank you. Item 5.02, District Reading Results, Dr. Stroh.
Okay, this is, um, the Measures of Academic Progress, um, reading results for the district. The first line is the entire district's reading results on the Measures of Academic Progress. And then you will see each building's reading progress. At the top, there is a key, and you can see that the red is below typical growth. Any numbers in red would be our, um, of greatest concern. Yellow is, um, above typical growth, but not met proficiency. Typically, what that means is that students in that yellow, um, portion are pretty close to proficiency, in other words, pretty close to grade level, and it just takes a little push to get them up to the green. And then, the green is proficient, that means that kids are in a range, um, right at, right on grade level, maybe a little bit above. And then the, the orange means that, um, that they're above projected proficiency, and sometimes it's below typical growth. And what that means is, for example, if you have a fifth grader who might be reading at the eighth grade level, a ten-year-old only has so much maturity and wouldn't be able to necessarily understand and comprehend everything in an eighth grade book. So, um, so that's pretty much what that means. We, you can see along, um, in that golden, um, or orange area, that we are pretty even on that. I, I want you to know that that is admirable, and there are many districts who would love to have results like this. The green, um, at most, at most schools is, is very, very good. It's pretty remarkable to have that much green and orange at a middle and a high school. So, we commend our middle and high school. That doesn't mean that we are not concerned with the number of students in red. You can see at our high school, we have about fourteen point five, um, of our students who are, percent of our students who are reading below, um, projected proficiency. And the, the high school and the middle school are, they're both addressing that through the MTSS process, taking those lowest kids and giving them the, the skills that they need. You can see that Lincoln Elementary has done very, very well. They have the lowest percentage of students in red, about ten percent. I think I can speak for all teachers and principals everywhere, that you don't want to have any kids in the red, that you want all your kids to be, um, green and orange. But alas, we always do, and we are always working towards making sure that, that all kids have everything they need to improve. Both Garfield and Eugene Field have about the same amount of kids in red, about twenty-seven percent at Eugene Field, and about twenty-five percent at Garfield. And what that means is, there are a number of things that are beginning to happen or have happened over the last couple of years, including the MTSS process, where those kids who are in the red are getting tiered instruction at the level that they need, whatever skills that they need, whether it's phonics or comprehension, whatever skills they need. They're working in small groups every day to get those skills. So, overall, um, I think that as a district, we've really done pretty well. Certainly, we want the red to go down, the orange and the green to go up, um, but I think we're in a pretty, a pretty good place. Questions that you might have before we look at our grade by grade?
Just real quickly, um, make sure I'm remembering it correctly. Lincoln was the first into the MTSS model, right? So you, so Garfield was about, is about a year behind? So we'll expect to see some changes over, over time like we did with, with Lincoln?
We absolutely will see changes over time. Every year, we become better and better with the MTSS process and identifying those kids that need those interventions. Um, and we get better and better at, at teaching those, um, those interventions. When working with small groups, I know, for example, at Garfield, Judy Kell, our instructional coach, has been working tirelessly with second and, and third grade teachers to, to work with small groups. And you know, when, when you think of twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-seven percent kids, that seems like an awful lot. But if you only have sixty kids in that class, for example, that might only be six or seven or eight kids. So, you know, we always think of percent, well, that must be a hundred, so we would have twenty-five kids, and that would be a whole class, and that's not necessarily the case. If we have sixty kids and, and we only have six kids, um, who are below, then that's much easier to, to meet the needs of six kids than it, it might be to meet the needs of twenty-five. So let's go to the grade by grade. Now, this data goes from the fall of 2012 to the fall of 2013, okay? So when you look at this, for example, let's start at second grade, and it's all green. Susan and I talked about this a little bit earlier, and there are several things that I want to tell you about, about second grade. The students had been in second grade for about three weeks, so they're really coming out of their first grade learning. We don't give the Measures of Academic Progress, um, in second through eighth grade until about the third week of school, because we don't want to test out of practice. Kids have been out in the su, in the summer, they may not have been reading, they may not have been practicing math, they may not have been doing a lot of academic things. So, we take a couple of weeks, get them back into the swing of things, so that when we test, we're testing deficits, and we're not testing out of practice. In second grade, we're very happy that it's all green, but as I said earlier, that's really a first grade score, because they'd only been in second grade for two or three weeks, depending on when they took the test. And when you're in second grade, ending up first grade, you're just learning to read, so it's more about phonics, decoding, and those kinds of things, rather than, as you move up in third, fourth, and fourth, and fifth, and sixth grade, and so on, it becomes more and more complex, and comprehension becomes a critical issue. So that's kind of the difference in the beginning stages of reading, which we would count as second grade, and then as we go up in third grade, which is a little bit more, um, a little bit more difficult. You can see as a district, um, we have some concerns at the third and fifth grade level. Both of those are pretty high, higher than we would expect, particularly when you look at the, um, the red all the way down. When you get to eleventh grade, that is very complex reading, uh, very high comprehension skills. Most people, um, most adults in the United States read at about the ninth grade level, and that's considered literate. So when we have, um, that number of kids at the eleventh grade who are reading at the eleventh grade level, that's remarkable. And we don't worry so much about eleventh grader, the, um, about twelve percent of eleventh graders who might be below grade level. If they're not significantly below, we know that they have the skills that they need. And then as you look through, um, all the way through, you'll see that really our significant challenge is third and fifth grade. Again, these kids are just coming out of the grade level below, and so we're looking at a number of things. Increasing homework, and homework meaning reading at home with a parent, making sure that, um, kids are reading books at their own level. Lots of times, kids will get a book that is far above what they can read, and they might read a few lines, look at the pictures, and put it away. It's critical, um, when we have this many students that are in the red, that we provide them with the materials and the instruction on their instructional level. So, as you look through that, what questions do you have about our reading?
Tell me what, what are we looking at? Projected performance, last two columns.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-eight point six percent projected, median percent thirty-five percent second grade. What, what's the projected, I mean, is this what we're hoping for?
This is the expected, based on the last few years of data, that would be the expected growth. And all of those look, look really good. I don't put a lot of stock in the median, um, because you have the same amount above and below, and, and real kids and real numbers get lost. in those kind, when you use those kinds of numbers. So, to me, the real critical part is, is the growth index, which is the second column over, and the percent of kids that we have that are proficient and above.
And I'm just amazed at that second-grade level that there wasn't a kid out of two hundred and twenty that was below typical or a kid that was above projected. I mean, that's just.
Isn't amazing.
That blows me away. I don't know, that's an anomaly I'm sure you wouldn't see very often.
Right. It'll be great to see how those kiddos do in, in third and fourth and so on. Yeah. Yeah. And I, you know, I might remind you also that we get a number of, of new kids in every year. And I know Mrs. Wilmington and I talked earlier in the year about her concern with, and I believe it was third grade, getting a number of new third graders in. Some of those kids had been in our school system in first grade or the beginning part of second grade and had moved, and now we're back in third grade. While we can help those kids and we know how to identify their needs, if they haven't had good reading instruction in the other school that they've been in, it's going to take us a while to get them up to speed.
I wonder if the same kind of thing has happened in the fifth grade? You know, you typically would have, you know, a couple of kids and they might be third and fifth grader, first and third, or.
Good point.
About a year apart. Now, it would be interesting to know if that's similar to the case and the reason why the fifth-grade number is higher as well.
Good point. We do know.
Could also be because in third and fifth and first grade as well, so much new material is introduced. Those are big, big years for introducing new things. And second and fourth grade introduce new things, but they solidify what's been introduced in the first, third, and first and, yeah.
When was this test, when was this test given?
It's given in the. Beginning of September.
Beginning of September. So, we'd only have been in school for, so we're test, we're testing previous-year information and not a bunch of new information.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's right.
And the thing is, every district has, has a lot of move in and move outs, I think.
Absolutely.
Because our society isn't stuck in one spot.
True.
There's a lot of transients. So, I mean, we're measuring like things.
And, and we, we just have to, we just have to get used to diagnosing and testing every kid as they come to us and working with them at, at the level that they come to us at and, and, and moving them ahead.
I was actually going to ask the grade school principals tonight if, are you seeing more transfers in this year? And I, I mean, are you seeing more movement than before or less? I mean, I just wonder if things are stabilizing? Do you think it's more?
More in or were you just bringing more in?
Just more transfers in and out.
In and out both?
Because some are, are repeats. I mean, left and they're coming back.
Already, already this year?
That seems to be a typ- typical pattern here, that kids move away even out of state and move back. In the short time I've been here, I, I've seen that. We've also had a number of foster kids move to our area just in the last few weeks. Now, I can't say that, that, that was part of this testing because I've only been aware of that probably the last three weeks. And this would, this assessment would have happened in September. So, next year, when I bring you these results, we'll look back at, at this year and we'll check on that projected growth. We've been doing the measures of academic pro- progress for about three years and only the fall and spring assessment and fall to fall for the last two years. So, as time goes on, as we move to Common Core, this will be one of the stabilizing assessments that we do. So, so we can put a lot of stock, I believe, in this assessment. And while we don't like to see that red on that left-hand side, I can tell you that there are many, many, many districts in this, this state that would love to see those red lines be so small. So, we celebrate the great work that our teachers and our principals do. And we know that we want to get the, the red lines smaller and smaller.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. On, on the reading for the second grade, in that meeting we were both at last Wednesday at Eugene Field, the AIMS Web indicated the second grade there had a tremendous problem. How could they have such a problem on AIMS Web? And, and this one over here says they're all a hundred percent.
Because you're measuring different kids. These kids, wait, no, these kids would have been second grade this year. That's right. Because the AIMS Web is a progress monitor. And so, these, on this assessment, this would have measured on grade level. That doesn't mean that they don't have holes in what they, what they know and what they need to be able to do. Whereas, the AIMS Web will tell you where those holes are and, and what you need to do to ensure that those kids are, are up to speed.
One of the things I always worry about as a board member is we change out on curriculums and things. And we go through some tumultuous times and some fairly stable times with having new curriculums. And some embrace it and some don't. And I know we always started some curriculum at, like we started Lincoln or whatever. And they took the everyday math and the journeys and things and kind of embraced it. And we heard that a lot. And I always worry as we look at, because you're looking at other curriculums now, that that's a smooth transition and it doesn't, you know, affect us or our kids, I guess. Doesn't affect the district, I guess, as we move forward.
And, and what we're looking at this year is we're looking at new materials and resources for math and for PE, and we're revising our, our writing. So, we will stick with journeys for another, I think it's three years. And you're absolutely right in, in that when we get a new program, when it's new to everybody, those who embrace it first and, and go full force in implementing it always do better. And, and for those who hold back a little bit and just test the waters, just like with everything else, if you don't do something with fidelity completely and wholly, you don't get the results that, that you expect. And we know that some people hang on to things longer than they should. And they might do a little of this and a little of that, and a little of this over here, and a little of Pinterest, which is my own. Which is, I, I, I just don't like the things on Pinterest because I, I worry that they don't give kids, they have cute activities. They don't give kids the depth that kids need. But what we need to know and what we need to be able to do is embrace whatever ma- ma- curriculum materials that we adopt. And we need to do that with fidelity at every grade in every school. Because it's research-based. And it's not research-based if we do a little of this and a little of this and a little of that. So, anyway, that's the end of my soapbox.
Stay on it.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Stroh.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now down to five point oh-three board reports. Do we have any board reports?
I was wondering if we wanted to have, to meet our new facilities? Or if you wanted to introduce or, I don't know. So, he could tell us something about himself?
Mr. White, if you would stand, we'll introduce you. Dale White is our new facilities and maintenance manager. He just moved here. He's been working for about three weeks. And. But that won't be the usual, right? That's not the deal we made. He had to move from Peoria, Illinois. So, we're awfully glad to have you. It's a great experience in working in construction, as a construction manager and, and working in facilities for correctional institutions. So, we welcome you and we are awfully glad you're here.
Yeah, very glad, glad to have you.
I got an email from somebody. I think they were trying to email you. So, my email is D. White, or White D. Is yours? White D.A., okay.
And have we violated any nepotism?
No. We are not related as far as I know. Welcome aboard.
I'd like to say something real quick. As a veteran myself, I'd like to extend my gratitude towards our staff members who have served our country and our great state for many years.
Absolutely.
We've got several that are currently on reserve status as, and we have one that just got deployed for a year. So, I'm grateful for their service, not only to our community and our district, but to our great state and the nation.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Yep.
Any other general reports?
Well, I, I, I did some things.
Well, then, tell us about them.
Okay. Well, I'm on a committee for CIS to do the daunting task of finding a replacement for Becky Nevergold.
It is a daunting task.
In the process of looking at, at resumes and applications. Oh, a middle school site council is this Wednesday, so I have nothing to report on that. But I did get to interview fifth graders for Exchange City a couple of weeks ago. And that was.
Did you, did you hire any of them?
Well, actually, we were, we were the telephone company and we were sort of the default company. No one really wanted to work for us. You know, they would come to us with this application, sports shop, sports shop, sports shop. They wanted to be anything but the telephone company. So, but it was still fun to interview.
I bet it was.
They were impressive young people. I mean, fifth graders, very impressive.
I used to love teaching fifth graders.
It was fun.
Well, I had, I went to the high school site council today and, and got a lot of interesting information. Dr. Cobb shared quite a bit about the, the North Central process. I guess it's called advanced ed now and the process that they're going through there. And that was very helpful. Also, spent some time talking about the ACT and about state testing and how that's, sounds like it could turn into a boondoggle fairly quickly.
By day after tomorrow.
By day. So, we'll be hearing more about that later, I'm assuming. But it was, it was a well-attended meeting and a lot of good information presented.
And I attended curriculum advisory committee. I'm always impressed with our teachers and staff administrators and all the things that they're doing and looking at and how it's relevant for kids and research-based and how they do a lot with a little and in a little bit of space. So, I'm glad that we're proceeding with facilities and, I don't know. I enjoy that committee because it's kind of fun. It's totally not anything, not in my sphere of knowledge. So, it's fun to learn what all's going on.
Any other reports? Hearing none, we'll move on. Since we don't have anything in item six, policies and contracts and like, we'll move on to executive session for a student matter.
Mr. President, we enter into executive session. The purpose of discussing matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person as a student, patient, or resident of a public institution, except that any such person shall have the right to a public hearing if requested by that person. The board returned to the open meeting at eight, or sorry, seven fifty-five P.M. In this room, the executive session is required to protect the privacy rights of a student who is identifiable. And we will have Dr. Cross, Dr. Stroh, and I would also like Dr. Cobb in as well.
Okay.
Second half?
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session until seven fifty-five. So, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. We'll go, be back in about ten minutes.
I'm talking to it.
Mr. Sherman, I move we return to open session.
Second?
A motion and a second to come back into open session. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. We're back in open session.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the original hearing results of the student in question.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to uphold the original hearing results. Did you get the, both of those, Teresa? Motion and a second for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Okay.
We need personnel?
Yeah.
Executive session, we don't do it?
We don't? Okay. Okay.
And Mr. President, I would move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the personnel report. All I can say is dang it on Dean because he was one, he also works for me, son. And he's good.
Dean Shaw?
Yeah. Great guy. Okay. Any, you don't say anything else? Oh, she's got, she's looking to get out of here. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six zero. You're on.
Okay, the first announcement is next Monday evening at six o'clock. That's November the eighteenth, is our first committee meeting to study facilities and to determine what might be our next steps. The meeting will last about an hour and fifteen minutes. And I will facilitate the first meeting. We will select a chairperson. And we have sent out invitations to about thirty-five people. And we would invite the public and board members to come. It will be here in this, in this room, as I said, next Monday night at six o'clock to about seven fifteen. Then, another announcement is today, communities and schools sponsored an event at the high school for all juniors, Dress for Success. And, and then, a final announcement is that while we've been told for several months that the state would recommend, the Kansas Department of Education would recommend choice for new state assessments. And the choices would be between the ACT Aspire, which is the ACT for students in third through eighth grade, and then, the ACT at the high school. Tomorrow and the next day is the State Board of Education meeting, which I will attend. And the recommendation, recommendation from KS, KSDE will be that three through eighth grade will take the Smarter Balanced Assessments, which are not ready yet. And then, the choice will be offered at the high school. And the recommendation is going to be that the choices at the high school be ACT or the Smarter Balanced Assessment, Work Keys, or CPAS. So, I look forward to hearing the discussion tomorrow and, and Wednesday morning as to why they're not offering choice for third through eighth grade. I don't know. I don't know. We, I was at the KSDE conference in Wichita last Monday for the assessment portion of that conference. And there were no clear answers. And the assessment information that they showed us didn't work. And at one point, everyone in the room, and this was at the Hyatt Regency Hotel in Wichita, and at one point, everyone had to shut down their computers. And then, when it still didn't work, we were asked to turn off our phones. Felt like I was in the nineteen nineties. I didn't, I didn't know you could do that. It was, it, it, it was truly ridiculous. And so, I, I'm very disappointed because I believe the best for our kids, to prepare them for college and career-ready is the Aspire and the Explore at the middle school level and of course, the ACT. But at least, it still looks like we'll have the opportunity at the high school to do the ACT. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. And then, on December third is the legislative dinner. I believe I have everybody down, it's gone, and Susan's going to let me know. And then, the KASB convention is December sixth, seventh, and the morning of the eighth, I believe. So, if you're interested in going to that, please let me know. That's all I have.
Joint city-county school board meeting is?
I believe that legislative dinner takes that, the place of that.
I, I know one thing I forgot to ask about in board reports. When I was at the high school today for site council, I walked up and down that hallway where we have the, what we, what is it? Apparently, a crushed line. I would like to see us get a new report on what it would cost to have that line fixed. I would like to see us get a new report on what it would cost to have that line fixed.
We can do that.
Just because I, you know, it bugs me that we have to bucket water into that classroom. Any other announcements?
I'd like to announce my intent to move that we adjourn this meeting.
That's quite an announcement. An announcement, a motion and a, and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed can just sit here, but it carries six zero.
Susan?